I hereby call the Des Moines City Council Meeting to order for August 3rd, and I will lead everybody in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record reflect that all seven council members are present. Really quick, got a couple of presiding officer updates, and the first one I'm going to turn over to Mr. Penning, or Councilmember Pennington, to give us an update on the Water District 54.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. I've met several times with the Water District Manager, and then we've met the representatives from the Water District, the city, the State Department of Health, our emergency manage, uh, management director. We all met and conducted a post-incident analysis. We had a follow-up meeting earlier this week, and we'll do another meeting here shortly as we start putting all of the pieces together. We've got a, uh, a meeting scheduled with the, with the Water District Manager and the city manager. They've both asked that I attend that meeting with them, so that will be coming up here, um, week after next. And a tentative date for the report for the council will be August, at the August 17th meeting. So that's where we're at. It's been a very collaborative process, a very good, open process. And so, I'm very, very proud to, to give you this update. Thank you.
Thank you. The second item I had was Nancy Stephens, who was a member of the Arts Commission in the past. I'm Stephens, my bad. Nancy Stephens. Anyway, I would like to send her flowers, and I would like somebody to make a motion and see a second. So I have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? She passed away, and she was somebody on the Arts Commission that gave time to the service of the community. And I just have a belief that if, if people have given time to our cities, particularly in, in, you know, those types of positions, then it's right to honor them. We're told it's in September. Yeah.
I forwarded that information on. I can find it again. But it's September, sometime in September.
So anyway, with that, all those in paper, raise your right hand. And that passes seven zero, so you can go ahead. Thank you. All right. Now we'll go into comments from the public. It is now, was there any correspondence? Okay.
No additional correspondence.
All right. It's now time for comments from the public. I would just like to remind those participants that any person making personal impertinent or slanderous remarks, or who become boisterous, threatening, or personally abusive while addressing the council will be removed from the meeting, and you will have three minutes to speak. However, our first two are from Local 242, and because you're an organization, we will give you five minutes should you need them. So with the first one, it'd be Andrea Ornellis. If you'll come to the podium. Thank you.
Thank you for the time. Hi, I'm Andrea Ornellis. I'm a laborer with Labor's Local 242, and a graduate of Northwest Laborers Training Center. I'm speaking in favor of approving motion number 23039, approving the action of the State of Washington Economic Development Finance Authority to finance a facility for the use of Northwest Laborers Training Center. Approving this motion will benefit many working families that have trouble accessing childcare in order to attend classes with, at the Northwest Laborers Training Center and other areas of Washington state. That due to the locations of the facilities that we have around the state, and sometimes the facilities are anywhere from, you know, 60 miles or plus from their location, they have to stay and, for about a week, sometimes up to two weeks away from their families. So approving this motion will not only benefit them, but benefit the community in this district as well, bring in more revenue from the restaurants, to the restaurants, and also shopping centers around the area. And I want to thank you all for considering this matter, and I will recede my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Sorry, I pronounced your name wrong before. All right. Mr. Billy Heatherington is next.
Sorry, Andrea, and I should probably compare the speeches if I repeat anything she said, but all great comments. So, Evie Mayer, Deputy Mayer and fellow council members, my name is Billy Heatherington. I'm a proud 20-plus-year member of Labor's Local 242. I currently serve as the political director for the local and formerly was an apprenticeship coordinator, coordinator, excuse me, for Northwest Laborers Training. I wanted to speak in favor of the resolution 23 dash zero, 039. It's item four on your agenda. First off, I want to thank the city staff for their work in crafting the resolution. Hope that council will pass such resolution this evening so we can proceed with the funding for our training site, which is right next to our local up on Highway 99. The current home of Northwest Laborers Training Program is in Kingston, Washington, if you know where that's at. We have a gorgeous, nearly 20-acre training facility over there that feeds and houses our members as they seek to further their skills in the construction industry. It has become glaringly obvious that this has become a burden to a lot of our families and apprentices that enter our program. As we look to diversify the industry, include more people of color and women, we understand that the needs of these and all workers have changed. We need a facility that allows members to access training and allows them to be home with their families and children during the evening. The $12 million in bonds that we are seeking from the Washington Economic Development Finance Authority, that's a, that's a mouthful. Is an investment in the community and training opportunities for current and future residents, right, even right here in Des Moines. It will allow our over 700 apprentices that we currently have at Local 242 that work in and around King County, the ability to spend their evenings with their children and families after a long day of training instead of having to drive a couple hours home each evening if they choose to. Similar training sites are located in Seattle, Renton, Kent, and Bellevue. And like Andrea said, bringing these apprentices to the city of Des Moines every day during the week when they're training, they'll shop at local businesses, eat at restaurants and stuff around the area. We know that both federal and state governments have recognized that our infrastructure needs are great, and that we have, and they have invested appropriately in these certain areas. So we need to meet that demand and get further training opportunities for people right here in Des Moines. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Heatherington. All right, moving on to Mr. Chuck Coleman.
Good evening, City Council. Mayor, city manager, and staff. For the record, Chuck Coleman, Redondo Beach Drive South. Speaking to you today, representing the members of the Redondo Community Association. During the June 22nd city council meeting, I delivered a message from the association thanking the city for their efforts to reduce unlawful street racing, reckless speeding, and noise pollution in our neighborhood. Prior to that, many testimonies have been made from this podium by Redondo citizens, and you're probably going to hear some tonight, and the association speaking to the traumatic nature, public safety, and severity of these unlawful events affecting our quality of life on a daily basis. While progress has been made to install speed cameras, several projected completion dates given to the community have come and gone. The association would like confirmation that the current projected completion date for the Redondo Speed Camera Project is August 31st. At the June 22nd council meeting, the association requested a copy of the project timeline and requested that the city's project manager for the project be identified as both the requirements of the June 1st contract with ATS. The reason for these requests is to streamline communications, manage community expectations, avoid miscommunication, and further disappointment. Since the June 22nd meeting, there have been no responses from the city on these simple requests. Unfortunately, the frequency and severity of the problems are getting worse, as you're going to hear some more tonight. In addition, the emphasis patrols promised to us have occurred only once or twice to our knowledge, and we would appreciate some communication from the police department when these occur so that we can let neighbors know that it's going on. To summarize, the association requests written responses to our request, and again, offers to assist the city in any way possible. Please let us know. Thank you very much for your consideration of these requests. Association looks forward to your responses. Are there any questions?
I'm just going to refer to the city attorney for some updates.
Thanks. Yeah. So, we can certainly get you those documents that you requested. Right now, we've publicly released that our projected date to have the cameras operational is December 31st of 2023. I will tell you right now that we will still be the first city in the state to install park zone cameras under the new legislation that was just passed last year. We're currently in the pre-construction phase for the Redondo Beach Drive cameras. We're working on a daily basis, because I see the emails every day. Our engineering staff, our street team, is working with PSC. They're working with Veram Mobility, and they're working with other private contractors to do surveys, figure out sightlines, figure out installation, which is going to require some, some boring to get the, the power in. We knew that was going to happen, and we're working on that. I would expect the signage to start going in soon, and then construction shortly thereafter. But just to sort of manage expectations, we are stating that the cameras will be operational by December 31st.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Moving on to Ms. Chris Tolleson.
Good evening. I just want to make sure that the council is aware that there was a shooting this last week, Monday night, down in the Marina parking lot, and that two of our residents, two different residents, had their windows shot. One shot, barely missed, went through the ponytail of one of our residents as she sat there and watched TV. She's now moving. But it's gotten to be quite a bit down there, and we, I think it was Councilmember Steinmetz had mentioned the park cameras down there as well at, like, a meeting four or five months ago. We'd like to see those happen there, too. Maybe it wasn't you. I don't know. But if it could be, if we could put those cameras on Cliff Avenue and maybe put some speed bumps down there. Friday night, there was like 35 street rods down there with kids, all mingling around, which was like, you know, in my mind, an accident meant to happen. But anyway, I just want you to be aware of it and do whatever you can to help us. Patrol more, oh, I know, sorry. The gates into the parking lot. What, we really want to see those gates happen as quickly as possible, because I think that would stop a lot of those, a lot of that kind of happening. You know? Just touring around the parking lot, kind of thing.
I've asked the chief administrative officer to, to update you guys on that as well.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. The parking gates will happen. The money, the funds for the parking gates were put into the bond that the council passed a few weeks ago. So what staff is doing right now, they're actively working on going to, out to these companies and checking out their equipment. We want to make sure that the equipment is user-friendly for the Pacific Northwest outdoor elements. And so, they, and the reliability, the user-friendliness of them, and how quick it is to get equipment if they do break down. So we do expect to go out for bid very soon with a proposal for...
Do you think they'll be in by next summer, maybe?
Oh, absolutely. Well, never say never, but I'm going to say. Absolutely. I know someone, so I'll make sure it happens. How's that? Pulling that card. But anyway, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tolleson. All right. Moving on to Ms. Melanie Barlow.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, Mayor, and the city council. I've not been present for a few months due to work, but I just want to express that my passion for the safety of the Redondo Beach community is no less just that I haven't been able to make it until now. Yes, I would like to second that hearing that the speeding, ticketing cameras are not going to be operational until June 20, 31st, December 31st, is kind of crushing. It just feels to me like our group energy, time, needs, concerns, and requests that we've been expressing for two years now that we just don't matter. It just, I'm, I'm a little crushed to hear that. To have, have to complete another summer without any speed deterrent support, to me, is just wrong and unsafe. I'm also experiencing, as Chuck alluded to, that the speeding, the noise, the aggressive behavior, which I am now calling neighborhood terrorism, is escalating. And if something isn't done and attention isn't given, it is going to continue to escalate. The escapades that are going on now with cars, with motorbikes, with street bikes, wheelies, you know, donuts right in front of the restrooms, just crazy stuff. Last night, there were at least four dirt bikes doing shenanigans. Rick will speak to that. It just, it's escalating. It's escalating, and it's because they, they're getting away with it. It's fun for them. Getting away with it is fun for them. Something's going to happen. I just, I, I don't want to leave. I love Redondo Beach. I, you know, it just, but it's, it's just very disconcerting. Also, in regard to the racing, why don't I call? The reason I don't call is because the cars come, they race around 272nd, they do their muffler thing, and then they're gone for another 30 minutes. They make a round or whatever they do. So if I call somebody and they come down, unless they stay for one to two hours, they're not going to catch. It's like every half an hour between 8:00 and 10:00 p.m. So without the presence there, they just continue to do this crazy, you know, circle that they're doing. Blowing mufflers in front of people that are gardening in their homes scare them half out of their wits. You know, one of the women actually turned to the gentleman and said, "Would you do this to your grandmother?" It's, 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 I don't know. I, I'm sorry, I'm so impassioned about this, and I need to just calm down, and I apologize for that. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barlow. Moving on to Mr. Rick Johnson.
Rick Johnson, Redondo Beach. I wasn't going to say anything tonight, but when I left to come, to come here, two bikes came up the street on Soundview Drive, three riders. Who get that? Two bikes, three riders, and dirt bikes. And dirt bikes were made for off-road. These kids, last night, four of them, running around, wheelies, passing cars, were driving on the sidewalks. And I'm not, I've seen it. So you don't say, "Well, you're just making this up." No, I saw it. I called last night, 9/11. And there was an officer that came down a little bit later, but they were gone then. I've told the police department, 30 minutes before sunset, 30 minutes after is a good time. We need more emphasis down there. I would like to see at least one or two of them a month if we're going to wait for a half a year to get anything, any lights or anything. But these kids, I don't know. And these two, or three that I told you about, they're new. They're not the four that comes by. And they're not only hitting Redondo. I think they're coming from Fred Way. And they're getting the same problem up there. I don't know if the police department have got together and see what they can do about it. But somebody's going to get hurt. I think there was something else I wanted to say, but, but it's with the police emphasis. If we get that a couple of times a month... Because these, these cars are 25 feet from my front door. And the cars aren't slowing down either. They're still the same every night, sometime up until 2:00 in the morning. So I appreciate it. Something to be done with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Moving on to Ms. Kavon Van.
Good evening. I've been missing in action for the last two months. I just needed a break from here. Wow. Echoing the rest of our, sorry here. I know some of you don't work under emotions. A child almost got hit a couple months ago. A two-year-old. This is on the car that I had reported to the officer. Literally two sec, two minutes after he passed, a child went into the road. Now, I can say the parents' fault because they let the child go too far from them. But we, as a citizen, or the, and the city, need to take some accountability, too, and help with this. The child went on, this car sped down the road, doing like 50, literally 50. When I'm turning and I'm getting a whiplash, he's going too fast. Soon as he passed, the child went into the road. Luckily, there's a car behind them that was going the speed limit, stopped literally this far from a child. At what point, again, are, we're going to get some help down in Redondo Beach before someone gets hurt? I start, I opened a shop down there next to the restroom. During the week, it's from 6:00 to 9:30-ish. I see everything down there. In the parking, we need help in the parking about 8:00 until 11:00. Not to have the officer there, but drive by every so often to stop them from gathering there at the back parking. Because if you don't, if they don't, they start, they use that as their start. Do the wheelies, do the donuts, the dirt bike every single day. On the street, on the sidewalk, they speed through the stop sign. If the car stops, they go around the car, speed through. They go one after the other. They don't even stop. Again, at what point are we going to take this serious enough so no one gets hurt? Quality of life, yes. Safety, is that part of quality of life? If my safety is not safe, I don't want a quality of life. Does it go along with each other? I would hope so. In the nook on 280th and 281st, someone put an idea of putting the emergency sign on there. That does not work. My neighbor had to scream at, at a car to tell them to turn the music down. That's just putting her in a situation of them getting mad or start something with her. We need something down there. I, I don't know what is needed because I'm not in the field of doing this, but we need something. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Van. All right. Moving on to the city manager's report. We have Chief Administration Officer Wilkins to take over. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of the city manager, I want to recognize our amazing staff who worked many extra hours over the waterland weekend. That would have been Saturday for the waterland parade and the kids event, and Sunday for the community barbecue and concert. And I wanted to give special thanks to our police department, Public Works, Marina, Events and Facilities, Park and Recreation, and all the other staff who spent time on coordinating, and planning, and facilitating, and working hard to ensure that our residents and visitors were safe and had a great time at the event. And I also want to mention about the Marina cameras. Ms. Tolleson mentioned, they are now installed. So hopefully, they'll do their job down there. So, and with that, I would like, it's my honor to invite Deepak Devastali, who is the Chief Operations Officer of St. Anne's Hospital, to the podium to give us a presentation. The floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Mayor Mahoney, Bonnie, just met you today. Distinguished members of the council. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Deepak Devastali. I'm the Chief Operating Officer at St. Anne Hospital. And what I'm hoping to do today is give you a sense of who we are, where we've come from, the realities that we're facing, some challenges, and what we're doing to support the communities from West Seattle down to Des Moines. The Cliff Notes version of who I am, this is my 18th year in healthcare. I started off as a naval officer in healthcare for about 13 years before transitioning to three power-packed years in, uh, south of Oakland with Kaiser Permanente before joining St. Anne Hospital here last October. And what I can tell you without a shred of doubt is we're really proud of the hospital, the staff members, and what we do for our citizens. the staff members, and what we do for our communities. I'll start off by saying that St. Anne Hospital has a history that you all know better than I do. Started off 58 as Burian General, in 78 changed to Highline Medical Center, and then CHI-Franiscan as part of the Catholic Health Group, had an affiliation in 2013, and then we became St. Anne Hospital, which we are now part of Virginia Mason Franciscan Health, which is the new identity as of 2021. So who we are is, essentially, I can boil it down into five areas that we support our communities with. Emergency services, sorry, thank you, which we do about 40,000 ED visits a year. Acute care services, inpatient services is what that means, ICU, step-down care, telemetry, med surge, that's about 500 admits or about 6,000 admissions a year. Mom, baby, we do about 1,000 deliveries in our newly refurbished labor and delivery department. Perioperative services, we do about 2,000 surgeries. And last but not least, the clinical support services. That's radiology, cardiac cath, interventional radiology, laboratory services. And together, we serve our communities and we're proud of it. Some of our challenges, well, I can break those down into a, a simple framework of, you know, staffing, equipment, and operations. Challenges have been, the pandemic has changed how professionals view healthcare, how they view work-life balance, which is no different than any other community or any other profession, I should say. And what we're finding is it's incredibly difficult for us to recruit, retain, and keep up with the inflationary effects of, of healthcare on staffing. There are some initiatives that we're undertaking to help us with them. Some are in the space of innovation. For instance, we are piloting a virtual nursing initiative which allows us to support our frontline nurses with a virtual nurse that's available in our hospital rooms. So we're starting that within 26 beds here next month, and we'll expand that to, with, with another 31 beds thereafter. As a way to keep our patients safe as we struggle and as we overcome the staffing challenges, I should say. Some other things that we're trying to do is you'll see our leaders out within the community educational institutions. Tony Swenson, who's our chief nurse, is on the board of Highline Community College. And we're looking to put our manager of diagnostic imaging at the board of Pima College as a way to provide a pipeline for our students to come into our hospital and create future pathways as we take members of our own community and have them serve the community that they live in. So those are some of the ways that we're trying to overcome the staffing challenges. The other part that I'll talk a little bit about is logistical support. We are an aging facility, so there are a lot of needs. And what we're trying to do is be very strategic about what equipment and in what order that we replace. So next week, we're gonna replace our cardiac cath equipment, which will revitalize our emergency department and the services that we can provide for our communities. So that is coming down the pike. It's a rebuild of a department that has seen staffing attrition and equipment going on the wayside as well. Some of the other things that we're working on is totally rewiring our hospital with telemetry. Now, reason why that's important is more and more, what we're finding is the patients that we admit from the emergency department, they require some sort of cardiac monitoring. And before recent past, we were not able to staff or, or place the patients in all of our rooms. But the good news is by the end of October, we will have all of our hospital wired with some sort of cardiac monitoring so that we can move the patients out of the emergency department, which we think will help reduce the wait times in the emergency department, but also provide timely service for our inpatients. That's in the works as well. So that's a couple of examples of logistical support that we're providing or changes that we're bringing in. Operations, this is perhaps the most difficult aspect that we're undertaking here. The hospital has been in net negative margin since the beginning of the pandemic. And as we all know, the inflationary effects of the pandemic has been really difficult for us. But through improved throughput, through innovation, through also some advocacy work where we have successfully helped our lawmakers improve or increase the reimbursement for our Medicaid dollars, which is gonna start in 2024, we're able to make advancements in that space as well. Another thing that is, I think, important for the entire team to know or our communities to hear is that we are continuously looking for ways by which we can provide services equitably and inclusively for all our communities. So if you look at St. Anne's population that we serve, three out of four patients are Medicare or Medicaid. We embrace this. We embrace this because this is our community and we are your community hospital. And it's our responsibility to make sure our operations run in a way that we can keep our doors open, we can employ members of our community, which is about 1,000 strong at St. Anne, and we continue to earn your trust by providing world-class care. So a little bit of what I wanted to say, I know about 30% of that might stick, but what I also wanted to do was provide an opportunity for you to ask me questions directly, to see if you had any questions, concerns, or comments about the care that we provide.
So Will, we have the council ask questions in this particular venue. I have my first one is, what can, what can our city do to help you?
So a cou- couple of different things. One is continue the advocacy work to dispel the myth that hospitals are making obscene amounts of money. That is not the case for a hospital like ours. We are a net negative margin hospital. And what, and not just that, three out of four patients have some sort of government insurance, whether that's Medicare or Medicaid. So supporting the advocacy work so that we can continue to keep our doors open would be one of the most primary things. Second, encourage your school districts to participate with us, connect with our community relations, connect with me, so that we can bring our patients, or, excuse me, our students into our doors so they can see what are the different professions available to them in the future as, whether it's in the clinical capacity, as doctors, nurses, technologists, phlebotomists, or in the non-clinical space as business leaders, as project managers. And that way, they have a vision of what a healthcare career could look like. So those two are perhaps the most first and foremost things that the, the council can do to support us.
Would you like introductions to Dr. Durand and Dr. John Mosby? Dr. Durand runs the Highline School District, and Dr. Mosby is the president of, of Highline College.
I, I would personally, yes, Dr. Durand's actually coming to the hospital this week.
Oh, excellent. Then, then let's connect afterwards and I'll facilitate an introduction to the college as well, because I know they have nurse training and so forth that could be beneficial to your operation as well. Now, I'm gonna turn it over to the rest of the council for questions.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Harris.
Not so much a question, but just a comment, you know, longtime customer. And I, you know, I understand the challenges you face. I just wanted to, this is long before your time, but back when it was Highline Hospital, Highline Hospital supported the cities to fight the third runway and to advocate against, you know, the noise and the pollution from the airport. You put your money where your mouth is in terms of public health, which no other hospital system did at the time. And that was with the same financial constraints you have today. So you have proven your commitment to the community, and I just wanted to thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Appreciate that.
Customer assignments.
Yeah, I, I just want to pick up on one of the things that you mentioned about, you know, letting younger people in the community know about healthcare careers. And, you know, we have large events often down at the Marina, and I would invite you to, you know, send some staff and maybe some, some information and set up a little booth or something like that. And we'd, we'd love to have you. I think, hopefully, everybody would support that as a way to do that. But we have a number of community activities that you could avail yourself of in order to help get that message out.
Most certainly. We will.
We could facilitate an introduction to our farmer's market manager as well. So when we connect, I'll, I'll provide that information to you as well. Great suggestion. Councilmember Pennington, then I'll go to you, Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Well, we spoke a little bit earlier and, but having been in the healthcare business for, you know, retired now, but 47 years and, and working out of this community and others, it, it's been, back when it was Burian General Hospital, so that was a long time ago in the seventies, but, you know, it, it's, it's really been cool to watch the, the evolution of Burian, to Highline, to St. Anne's, and, and the medical technologies and the, and, you know, the, the, just the, the advancement of, of the healthcare in, in South King County. And I was around before Medic One was in South King County, so we would take a lot of patients up there, you know, CPRs and the whole thing. And, and, and so it was, it's really, it's really, to, to be a part of that and to see that is really cool. And six years ago here in a couple of weeks, I was at the other side of that, and you guys thankfully resuscitated me and, and here I am today. And so it, it, it speaks to the care and professionalism and the doctors that were doing that and, and my, my buddies that, that took me up there from, from the fire department, it's, it's like your ER doc was like a general in there doing that. And, and that's the, the stuff that, that a lot of people don't see what goes on behind those doors. And it is a tremendous amount of, of discipline, care, the follow-up, the whole thing. So it's, it's a very, very well-run organization and, and the care they deliver is second to none. So thank you both on a personal and a professional level.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a segue with the, the connection conversation, we also have a human services advisory committee in our, in our, our city. They facilitate the grant funding that our city puts out into different organizations. So a couple of the staff members that have worked really closely are, are in the audience tonight too. So, and I think that we have also had a, I think we call it a resource fair or a community services fair outdoors where people can connect with the different services that are available to them in the community. So I don't know if that's a good connection or not, but.
I think it's very forward-thinking.
Rochelle and Nicole.
We, we see nods and we can facilitate that introduction as well.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any, anything else? So you have the floor.
Mayor, if I may, Mr. Devastali, I just want to say, Mr. Wilkins and I have had the great pleasure of visiting St. Anne's over the last 14 weeks. We have maybe a few more to go, but I can just tell you that your staff have been amazing, supportive, knowledgeable, professional, and we've had the best care there. So thank you and thank your staff for that wonderful experience we've had with such an interesting situation.
I would add that you saved my father's life. I was eternally grateful for that as well. Thank you so much for coming. We really appreciate it and we look forward to a, a long-term relationship working with you. And thanks for what you do for our community.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Appreciate the invitation. Thank you.
And Mayor, I have one other thing here. I sent you all a letter from Wesley today. They were just basically thanking the city for contributing $25,000 of ARPA funds for their digital signing for the Sky Bridge of Cross 216th. And that they're gonna let us know when they're ready to cut the ribbon, and when we, when we hear that, we'll pass it on to you and have a celebration. And Mayor, that concludes the city manager's report. Thank you.
We have questions.
Yes, the, well, once again, we've had, you know, quite a delegation from Redondo here to, and they offer to do whatever the community can. Is it possible to find out from the police chief exactly what the parameters are as to what the citizens can do to, you know, help alleviate the situation down there?
Well, a couple of things. One, our new police chief is scheduled to start very soon, so let me, did you want to come up, Acting Chief? How about I have Acting Chief Kui come on up and give us a presentation on that? Thanks, Mark.
Yes, so, good evening, council, citizens. The police department actually has had one to two emphasis patrols. We can, can do a better job of communicating the after-action on that, as was alluded to. I think that some of the concern is probably misdirected it to council. The mini-bikes, motorbikes, our officers have gone down there. And if you don't stop for an infraction, which is what's happening, nothing happens. So you need to, I think, kind of absorb that, that the legislature prohibits pursuits with the exception of certain crimes. So that's the dynamic that's at play. I sympathize with what you're saying, but it really becomes difficult if you can just flip off the cops and drive off. Yeah, so that's the dynamic that's happening. We go down there, we show up, officers have been down there tonight. I've been texting them, so.
Did they catch him?
No, they didn't. And that's happening in federal way too, and other jurisdictions. So I think that engineering fixes are always helpful in a lot of situations where you can try to engineer a fix versus education and enforcement. I think the education piece isn't getting through to the right people that need educating right, so. And we can just share our stats. I don't have the stats prepared right now, but.
Is it possible when the new chief comes into place, he can help facilitate maybe a meeting with the Redondo community?
Sure. And we, you know, Chief Thomas and I have gone down there before. I think it's been a while. We do have a police advisory board. We do, are always open to having meetings. But I think that the underlying dynamic here that's playing out, and you see it in other jurisdictions, Seattle, Tacoma, South King County, ultimately, if you want to pop a wheelie and flip off the cops, and it's against state law for the police to pursue you, help me with the solution. That's the dynamic you have going on here, so, but we are definitely happy to meet with the community and do so.
Thank you. Excuse me, excuse me, we're gonna go to the council. Thank you. Next, Councilmember Nutting.
Yeah, so I, I just urge everybody, all the citizens out there, to contact your state legislature to remedy the situation. I just did a ride-along maybe two weeks ago, and we were in pursuit, turned around, went after a car, and it was clearly stolen. The second they punched it, we went lights and sirens, and by dispatch, we're told to terminate pursuit. So it's state mandated that you cannot pursue anything other than a violent crime or a suspect from, well, a suspect from a violent crime. So if they're popping wheelies, they're running through stop signs, the, the officer will turn around and go after them, but dispatch will tell them to terminate pursuit. It is against state law to do that, and we cannot do that. So contact your state legislatures, give our officers the ability to do what you guys want us to do, because as a city, we cannot do that. So I, I don't know what else to say. I've been in the car, I've been there, I've asked the same questions, why cannot we pursue? And it, it is because of state mandates saying that, that we can't do it unless they shot somebody, unless they were in a violent accident and took off. There, there's nothing, there's nothing else we can do. So.
Councilmember, c- c- excuse me, Councilmember Pennington. You're, sir, sir, you're out of order, please. Go ahead, Councilmember Pennington.
So, and I will echo what Councilmember Nutting has to say, and a lot of that legislation originated out of the 30th district. So those, that's your district. And so you need to, you know, everybody does, but in particular, talk to your, your folks and let them know that you're not happy about that. And I know that they've tried to make some changes this last session, I think it was pretty minimal, but again, and I was down in Tuckbella the other day, and down right by the fire station, there's three four-wheelers and, and four dirt bikes, and they're going right down the main boulevard, popping wheelies and, you know, it's everywhere, everywhere you go. main boulevard, popping wheelies and, you know, it's everywhere, everywhere you go. And so to echo what the chief says, help them, because they are they are bound by by those laws, and those laws are very, very restrictive. And and the the police can't do what they need to do to protect you. So.
Sir, sir.
So anyway, again.
You're not being recognized and won't be in this part of the meeting.
Came out of the thirtieth district, so.
My apologies.
That's what, no, no, it's okay. That's that's what I'd encourage you to, talk to your folks.
Right. Councilmember Harris.
While I fully support reform to pursuit laws, I believe it would be a mistake to essentially foist these issues off on the legislature or that thing at the risk of sounding unsupportive. Redondo is not a pursuit environment. It's you're going to have to at some point provide some kind of preventative. And I would just say to the public that you are doing exactly the right thing, because Mr. Johnson, you know, I remember when he first showed up, and he would show up by himself alone, month after month, year after year, to make these same complaints. The difference now is that he has support. And so to the extent that people from Redondo keep showing up and keep making some noise, you will get the reform that you want on your street, regardless of what happens at the state legislature. And again, I support those reforms, but you're doing the right thing by showing up to these meetings as a group, because that's the only way it will be addressed long term. Thank you.
I'm just going to close with the fact that we had a meeting several months ago. And if you recall, I brought up the fact that some of these things are going to take a little bit more time than all of us want. And they are. But it is an important thing, and none of these council members here deny that. We we share your importance in this issue. We're not living down there except for Councilmember Ochsker, but I'm down there frequently and so forth, and I see first hand, too. But just to reiterate, it is important to us. And I know that staff has these concerns, and they're working on some of the preventive things, the police force, the public works, the legal department, and so many others trying day in and day out to try to help your situation. But as Councilmember Pennington brought up, this is a region-wide problem. Unfortunately, you're one of the congregating points, just like the Marine are, and we're seeing these problems, and there's much more brazen activity than there's ever been. And a lot of that is because there is no ramifications for their conduct. And it's very problematic, and it was well said. One of the things you can do to help us is work with your legislators to change and repeal some of these laws, so these guys can do their jobs and we can start enforcing the law rather than lawlessness. Anyway, with that, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I am done with the report.
All right. Moving on to the consent agenda, will the city clerk please read the consent of the consent calendar?
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, approval of minutes. Item three, right-of-way dedication, College Way. Item four, Washington Economic Development Finance Authority bond request. Item five, Twenty-Fourth Avenue South Improvement Projects, Construction Contract Award and Consultant Services Agreements. And that concludes the consent calendar, Mayor.
Councilmember Nutting.
I move to approve the consent calendar as read.
Second, is there any council member that wishes to pull an item?
I don't want to pull anything. I just want to comment on an item.
Okay, a quick quick comment, please.
My comment is on item number four, the Washington Economic Development Finance Authority bond request for the Northwest Laborers Training Center. I wish Billy was still here, but and Andrea, but as as our aging community retires in the next twenty years, Gen X as they are, per hundred retirees, there's only going to be fourteen skilled labor people to take those hundred positions. And I don't know who's going to build your facilities anymore. If a hundred people retire and only fourteen take those jobs, I mean, this is great work that they're doing, and I wholeheartedly support item number four, so.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull item number five.
All right. So the consent agenda we'll be voting on is items one, two, three, and four. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous, seven zero. All right. Councilmember Harris, you have the floor for item five.
Thank you. This is really just more of a quick thing. Given the fact that the open house was back in December of twenty twenty-one, would it be possible to do a couple of things? Is the city prepared to provide some kind of tentative schedule? Not hard promises, but if but, you know, when it's going to start affecting people in terms of traffic and, you know, that kind of thing, not hard, you know, nothing hard, but just, yeah.
Yeah. Good evening, Tommy Owens, City Engineer. Yeah, so we will update the website with all that information and make that available.
Okay. I mean, do you have like a, you know, vague idea at this moment or, you know, TBD?
I would say for the most part TBD. It really depends on the contractor's availability and when they'd like to get going on the project.
Okay, so this is just a, you know, request just between you and me and the wall. Could you put that open house back on the website prominently someplace? Because it was pretty darn awesome information.
Okay.
A lot of stuff I think the public will want to know.
Yeah, we can do that.
Thank you. That's it.
I I'd just like to add that I, being Transportation Committee for the last five and a half years, we've been trying to work this progress process for. The fact that you guys got the Safe Brouts of School grants on this, which pays a majority of the project, which I'm excited about, the safety of our children is one of the most important things. And this road has been a, you know, well, a pain in the ass, for lack of better words. And I'm really glad to see that we're finally moving forward with it, and I thank you and your staff for the hard work.
Well, thank you. This project was Washington TIV, not.
Yes, I'm sorry, TIP, but it got the grannock because it was for schools, correct? And the and and provide safety. Am I am I mistaken?
That was definitely part of it.
Yeah, yeah. Deputy Mayor Buxton.
I make the motion.
Okay.
I move to direct administration to bring forward a budget amendment to the twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-eight capital improvement plan and the twenty-twenty-three capital budget to include the amended Twenty-Fourth Avenue South Improvements Project and the amended Twenty-Fourth Avenue Pipeline Replacement Project as described herein, and include such amendment in the next available budget amendment ordinance.
Second, have a second. Any further discussion before we take a vote? Councilmember Harris.
I just wanted to point out what a huge deal this is for the city, and I want to thank you guys. Just this kind of grid work takes, like, a decade. It's it's astounding how much work it takes to do a road like this, and it's a a big accomplishment for our city. So thank you. That's it.
Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Well, it's small, and compared to that, I heartily agree with Councilmember Harris, but I also appreciate the extent that the department went to in providing really great information in the packet and extensive background in in reading here. So they they really prepared well for us to make this decision tonight. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, motion one, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. All right.
Second motion.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Buxton.
I move to approve the Public Works contract with SCI Infrastructure LLC, the contractor, for the Twenty-Fourth, the Twenty-Fourth Avenue South Improvements Project in the amount of seven million nineteen thousand two hundred seventy-two dollars and fifty-five cents, and authorize a project construction contingency in the amount of seven hundred and two thousand dollars, and further authorize the city manager to sign said contract substantially in the form as submitted.
Councilmember Nutting.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously.
Third motion. I move to approve the Consultant Services contract with Exel Tech Consulting for the Twenty-Fourth Avenue South Improvements Project in the amount of seven hundred and seventy-three thousand eight hundred nineteen dollars and thirty-six cents for the construction management and inspection services, and further authorize the city manager to sign said contract substantially in the form as submitted.
Councilmember Nutting.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, motion three. Motion passes unanimously, three, seven, nothing. All right.
Last motion.
Deputy Mayor Buxton, you have the floor.
I move to approve the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three On-Call General Service Engineering Services Task Assignment twenty-twenty-three dash twelve with Parametrics, Inc., to provide engineer-record services for the Twenty-Fourth Avenue South Improvements Project in the amount of sixty-five thousand eight hundred eighty-nine dollars and ninety-one cents, and further authorize the city manager to sign said task assignment substantially in the form as submitted.
Councilmember Nutting.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously, seven zero. All right. We're on to new business, and we're going to be talking draft ordinance twenty-three dash zero one zero compost procurement policy. And Tyler, you have the floor.
Good evening, council. Just a brief presentation for you on this draft ordinance. I get the exciting news to talk about compost with everyone tonight. So we're here for draft ordinance twenty-three ten compost procurement policy. Next slide, please. So just a quick overview of the ordinance. The origination came from Washington State Legislature in twenty-twenty-two, House Bill seventeen ninety-nine, and this required the diversion of organic materials away from landfills and to composting businesses to reduce greenhouse gases. Per this bill, in any county or city over twenty-five thousand would have to pass a compost procurement ordinance. Legal, planning, and public works all assisted in drafting this ordinance. The goal of this ordinance is is meant to encourage cities and counties to procure more compost products to help this process of eliminating compost going to landfills. More compost then would naturally go to these composting businesses and need to be used. So this is the state's way of encouraging compost use in our region. Requirements specifically coming down to the cities and counties affected by this ordinance. This applies to any city-funded projects soliciting or reviewing bids, and we need to identify whether or not compost can or could be used for that project, and if so, use it. Applications, the following projects we'll have to evaluate include landscaping projects, projects that have construction soil amendments as part of them, projects with erosion prevention, and that's where we till in the compost into bare soils to reduce soil runoff from construction sites, and then any green infrastructure projects where the compost is actually treating stormwater. We also took this ordinance on June eight, twenty twenty-three, to the Environment Committee, and unanimously was recommended to go into the full council for consideration. And I will leave you with the last slide here with the motion.
Councilmember Nutting.
I move to enact draft ordinance number two-three dash zero one zero, establishing a compost procurement policy for the city projects.
I have a second for Councilmember Pennington. Any discussion? I got, I'll start with Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Steinmetz, and then you, Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Tyler. Good job. So in regard to procuring the the compost, is there, are there any parameters around the type of compost that you can procure for something or where, like where the location is? For example, I mean, well, some people feel bad, but I've used Tagrow before, and it's like a miracle drug for trees that are having a hard time. You can put it on anything, and it'll grow. But some people have a little bit, they don't really have an affinity for that kind of compost. So I'm, it's got, contains human waste, right? So can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. Yeah, so the the only restrictions that are placed in the ordinance, and I'm just going to read it off the page here, that they come from companies that produce compost locally, they're certified nationally, and sourced from municipal solid waste compost programs. So it's those that are being sourced from what would have ended up in landfills. So those are the three requirements for what this compost is required to be.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Councilwoman Steinmetz.
Actually, my question was pretty similar to to that, but this means no zudu. Yeah. Anything like that, correct?
I I don't believe so. Yeah.
All right. So it's only going to be, I don't even know quite how to define it, but plant material, the.
Food waste, plant waste, anything that could probably be naturally composted in your yard, we would see composted, and Cedar Grove is a great example.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. Do we have any vague idea of of a budget for compost? Is just like how much we would be spending on that? Or is it too early to?
Not yet.
Okay.
So thi- this is brand new. We're we're going to start the valuation as city projects come online and see how this impacts projects, and we can report back to council on this item in in years to come, because this is this is a mandate.
So, okay, so two of three along the same lines, I guess that means we can't really quantify how much of this stuff we're going to need or use at at this point, right? Okay. So number three, yeah, although this may not be an entertaining thought, what are the possibilities of actually creating our own? Is that something economic or that, you know, is there like a, is there, you know, a turnkey kind of system for cities our size that people are doing? Or is that just, you know, not, not something you want to even think about at this moment?
Yeah, I I I'm not qualified to answer that question. I I think this, per the ordinance, would have to come from those being sourced from these landfills. And I just don't know if logistics would even entertain a city hosting that procurement.
Yeah, no.
We'd have to look into that.
I was just wondering if there was, you know, like, companies that essentially come in and do it as a service, you know?
Not not that I'm aware of, but but they may be out there.
Thank you.
I have a question. Is there a potential in with this policy? We have a couple of community gardens that possibly could use this material and maybe do some partnership with them. And maybe, I know, you know, we do like recology collects batteries and lawn mowers and stuff like that. Is it possible that we might be able to have like a compost distribution type of event?
Absolutely, and that that kind of goes into the consideration here. It's it's any city-funded project, it's good, including landscaping. So I'm thinking these these projects would fall broadly within that category, and this could be applicable for contributions of those kind.
City Attorney.
Just to add on to that, part of this statute that required the city to adopt this also required in section seven that the city do public outreach. So we are required by the state law that we will develop strategies to inform residents about the value of compost and how the city uses, how we use it in our operations. So part of that could be public information and other events that promote the use of compost.
Fantastic. Any other conversation, discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously, seven zero. All right. Thank you very much, Tyler. All right, moving on to introduction of items for future consideration. This is the sole time for purpose of new business items that have not previously been discussed before council. This is not a time for questions of old business. Council members can submit questions and seek updates on previously discussed business to the city manager at any time. Do any council members have new business they would like to propose? I got Councilmember Steinmetz and then Councilmember Harris.
I I received a phone call earlier this week from a constituent who has a sort of unique business that falls within the short-term rental bailiwick. And I understand we've addressed, tried to address that once, and it went nowhere. But I would really like to see if there's a way to put that on next year's work work plan in order to come up with a short-term rental regulatory framework for the city. And and I'd suggest that that go to economic development in order to do that if the chair is amenable.
Just to add, I also was contacted yesterday on the individual, these share businesses like B and Bs, and this one happened to be a pool where they share for birthday parties and stuff like that. I think it might be the time that it is something that would which should go to the economic development on the work plan when it can be assessed in twenty twenty-four. Are you?
Agreed. I'll I'll accept that on our work plan. Agreed. I'll, I'll accept that on our work plan for 2024 and more to come. If I can just really briefly add, is that given what happened in the state legislature this year, allowing greater ADU, greater use of ADUs and development of those, I think there's going to be even more short-term rentals coming. And I think we're well served to try to get out in front of that rather than scramble to, to do that. So I think there's a certain urgency to, you know, start dealing with this and set up a decent regulatory framework.
Agreed. I think a recent example up on Pack Highway where our city staff got in front of a zoning issue that gave us some legs to stand on. So I think we definitely need to head in that direction. Any, anything that you have to add? Okay, seeing none. All right, Councilmember Harris?
Thank you. Two items, actually. First of all, along the lines of your introduction, I was informed this week that Carol Davis, the founder of the food bank, has passed, and that she is something, it is hard to overstate her contribution to the city. And I would also like to ask the council to put together flowers and the appropriate thing from the hearts and minds of-
I have a second. See one? All right.
Oh, and one, one other thing is that there will be a service for her at United Methodist on Ninth, on the 26th. And I just, it's hard to overstate how important the food bank has been to this.
All those in favor?
Yeah.
Yep. So that, that'll happen. And you had a second order of business, sir?
Yes. And this will sound trite perhaps to some, but I would like the city to investigate resizing the podium. I'm not kidding here. It's too tall for many of our speakers, including, and especially women. And it would be nice if it were adjustable or just more in line with, yeah.
I think a temporary step or something might be the easier solution.
I just, it's just that it's too, it's too, it's too tall.
Staff will look at it. I actually have one other new item of business that I would like to propose, and it's, it's simply letters to the cities of Sea-Tac and Federal Way. A lot of people know this and some don't, that recently I had my truck stolen. And what was impressive with the, the city of Des Moines, it happened in Sea-Tac, but the city of Des Moines assisted me in getting a report stolen. They were able to take the flock camera system and track where I was the night before. Unfortunately, Sea-Tac does not have that system, and they weren't able to track it. And then in addition to that, most of us are familiar with the murder homicide that occurred up at, in Safeway, up on 216. It was the flock camera systems that Tuck Willa installed, from what my understanding was where they recognized the guys. I guess the permission to pursue and everything else because of that verification came a little easier and so forth. And what my thought was is because both Federal Way, who has their own system, I believe, but Sea-Tac does not, and they, they definitely should have the means that if they were to incorporate and ask for those cameras, or put those camera systems in it as well, and I know Kent's in the process of doing, putting theirs in, that we have full coverage of the area, particularly Pack Highway, which is problematic with crime, and we might be able to, be able to apprehend some of these individuals that are causing a lot of our problems in the region. So that's kind of my new business and kind of looking for support on that.
What exactly are you asking?
I'm asking that the city of Sea-Tac and Federal Way consider to install the flock camera system so we can tie the systems together so we can have full police review on the entire Pack Highway corridor in particular.
You're asking to send, I'm sorry.
Send letters.
Send a letter.
Yes.
To both cities.
Asking, requesting, or suggesting they, they entertain the idea.
I got a second from me.
Did you have a comment?
Question.
Question.
Question, comment. Do you think it would be valuable to reach out to Tuck Willa and Kent to collaborate with us on that ask?
Yeah.
Might be a little more powerful.
Well, and I would say this is that if, if our city was there to support it, then I would reach out to both those mayors and ask them to-
They would sign on.
To, to do it as well.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's-
He has, you have a question?
Yeah, I, I-
I'll get to you, Councilmember.
It's, it's one thing to write to, you know, mayor to mayor, but I would also encourage you to include the, the police chief or the police department. And I, and I don't know if they have chief, if they've had, you know, conversations at your Valicon meetings about regional flock camera systems. But that would be a good place for, for them to have a conversation and-
We, yeah. We, we had, we had to start a conversation not too long ago considering this matter and, but I, but yeah, it's something that I think that with, with a workforce multiplier like that, and a recent example of proven success shows you that it's, it can be successful.
I don't think there's any argument. I just, collaboration between, you know, the elected and, and the actual folks that, that, you know, do that is, is really important.
Yeah, just looking for council support before we pursue it. And Councilmember Oxiger, you had a question?
Yes, just in the interest of being, taking a 360 view on this, should we also reach out to Burien and to Norbity Park?
I don't see a problem with that either. I think, I think it's been proven to be valuable and including those, those partners as well. They are King County in the, in the contracting, which probably makes a problematic, I mean, Sea-Tac is, but not Norbity Park.
Burien is.
But Burien is too. So, but the request to the councils is one of the ways I, I mean, it gets approved there, but coordination with the, obviously, the law enforcement would be instrumental to that as well. So, all right, well, Councilmember Steinmetz, you had a question?
Not really a question, just I, I think it's a great idea to try to coordinate the cities as best we can. And I, I love to see Des Moines getting out front.
Yes.
You know, being the leader in that situation.
And that's exactly, I, like I said, from firsthand seeing success in a couple of things where we were able to pinpoint, you know, in particularly like my example, they knew where I was after leaving a meeting, going down Pack Highway, and even coming through town. But of course, was stolen in Sea-Tac and drove out north and probably never crossed into the Tuck Willa system. So, you know, they would have been able to track, maybe possibly locate all of these people that are potential victims of theft and things like that as well. And along with some of the, in particular, any of the egregious offenses that are occurring, you know, violent crimes and so forth, which is the priority. So, okay. All right, we're going to move on to board and committee reports, and we're going to start with Councilmember Harris.
Okey-dokey. Just regarding people, again, thank you for everyone who showed up from Redondo. I just want to clarify that, you know, it's not particularly entertaining to have to show up to all of these meetings. It's just that it's necessary, okay? You, you have to have a group voice in order to make a long-term change. It's unfortunate, but that has been my experience after 15 years of watching these meetings. And with regard to the Marina, I would wonder, there's this invention called a chain, and perhaps we could think about, you know, simply blocking off the Marina ingress and egress in the evenings until we get those gates. I attended four National Night Out events, and they were great. I was a bit disappointed to get a note from the city saying that they wanted these events to be private, and I would encourage the city to make that policy clear because my understanding was that National Night Out was a community building event, and I would like to see them as public as possible. That was my understanding, and I think that's the way to go. But if we don't feel that way, we should have a policy on that. To my mind, if you sign up, you're telling your neighbors that you want them there and you want to get to know more people. And I believe that that is the way that you create safety, not by having private events. I attended port meeting and spoke with a couple of commissioners where unfortunately, in 2020, the, the port provided support for the idea of updates to port packages that had started to not work properly, mold and all kinds of bad things. And they walked that back entirely, saying once again that they wanted to put that into what is called the next Part 150, which basically delays the discussion out into as late as 2028. It is shameful, and the commission is back where it was 15, 20 years ago, which is not great. And I want to thank Congressman Smith for getting a change to the FAA reauthorization law, which will basically save North Sea-Tac Park. And I only mention it because that little earmark that he got done also could have applied to the city of Des Moines, which has rapidly lost tree cover. And it is also shameful that we have not provided support for the same kinds of mitigation that the city of Sea-Tac has. There is no reason that we could have not received those same kinds of carve-outs in the FAA law. And it's doubly unfortunate because the next reoth is also in 2028. So I'm happy for North Sea-Tac Park, but it's kind of like watching somebody else get the grant that you could have gotten. And so mixed feelings today. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Moving on to Councilmember Pennington.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, thank everybody who's here and who stayed and that and for speaking. Again, you know, when you show up and talk, that's, I think, local government is where a lot of work gets done, and, and having your voice here and hearing that is, is always great, and I thank you for that. I know, Rick, we've been talking about Redondo for a long time. It's, you know, it's, there's a, God, it's just not just Redondo, it's a mess everywhere. And I get it in my house, too. So, and I don't know the answer. I know it's, it certainly is a, an emotional topic because when it starts interfering, I think somebody talked about quality of life and that, you know, it, it's, it's, it's just an emotional tough, you, you expect to have these different things. And, you know, stuff in society has changed, laws have changed. And I was serious when I said Dr. The 30th, the guy who, who spearheaded a lot of this is, is no longer a representative. He's only spent one, one, one go-round there and didn't offer up to get reelected. But, you know, I know that, that I've made my voices heard on a lot of different levels regarding that and, and other issues that, that those reforms have, have, have the way they've, they've affected public safety and, and the people who work in public safety. So again, keep up the good fight. It's, it's an important conversation all the way around. I'd like to thank the staff and all the volunteers that have, that have been working and putting on all the different events over the last few weeks. They're, they're great things, and, and I very much appreciate that. And I think that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Pennington. Moving on to Councilmember Steinmetz.
Well, I did a, done a number of things since the last meeting, but just some of the highlights are, the Sound Cities Association had a meet and greet at the Amazon building down in Bellevue and met a lot of people from a lot of different cities. And I can tell you, they were, you know, sort of echoing the same kind of problems that we're having. So we are, we are not alone, not that that makes you feel any better. But it was a, it was a very good event. I went with Deputy Mayor Buxton. And, you know, like I said, we just talked to a lot of different people I met and really had a nice conversation with a new council person from Norbity Park. So it was a, it was a very nice event to do. I've been to a number of events down at the Marina. There have been movies lately, there have been concerts lately, there's been all kinds of events. You know, this is the get out at night time of the year. And so if you haven't been, I would encourage people to take a look at the calendar and see what's coming up and encourage people to, to head that way. I also participated in the National Night Out. I stayed in the Woodmont area, which is where I live, and, you know, just met more people who are living in my community, ran into some people that we knew that had moved away and now have moved back to Des Moines. And they moved back because they just thought it was a wonderful place to be and that, you know, compared to where they were, it was much better down here. So that was sort of a positive thing. Regarding Redondo, and we hear everything that you're saying, I think the council, you know, would love to see this move a lot faster. But, you know, the solution is to get something up that does have a preventative effect, which is the camera system that we're talking about. But to do that, we had to get state legislation passed. We had to then work with the camera company to come up with something that would work. And now the construction piece begins. And, and all of this just takes an enormous amount of time. I know that doesn't make you feel any better, and it doesn't move it along. But, you know, from whatever the council can do, we have pushed to get something done down in Redondo because we've heard you. And I, just kind of as an aside, I have heard from a number of other constituents in various neighborhoods that they want something done now, too, because of the speeding that they're experiencing. So I think people are paying attention to what Redondo has accomplished here in getting something done. And, I mean, we heard, I heard about it at the National Night Out. People wanted speed bumps on their street. So, you know, really, you're doing a great job and, and, you know, keep the pressure on the city, keep the pressure on us. It'll get done. It just takes longer than anybody ever anticipates it getting done. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Oxiger.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Well, I'd like to give a shout out to Destination Des Moines. Sorry, yes. Thank you. I just wanted to give a shout out to Destination Des Moines, the Legacy Foundation, Rotary, the Yacht Club, and the Wesley Woodworking Group for all they did to help make Waterland a success this year and pull it off. And, and they're the originating groups that do this. And of course, they have city support from the staff and all of that. But I think it's important to recognize the groups that put on the parades, the Kids Festival, and the community barbecue. And then I just have, I actually have a question as to whether or not we have an update, and I see it's, with regard to the Kent-Demoine Road closure, if we've got any kind of an update on when that might happen? Because I know there's concern from people in the area of Des Moines Elementary as to whether it will affect them during the school year. Sorry, Tommy.
Yes, I wish Tyler was still here, but, because he's kind of the project lead on that project. But it looks like mid-September is about the timeframe that they're looking at. So the contractor is just waiting to procure the materials is what they're waiting on, and trying to schedule that around the closure.
Okay.
If you could, if Tyler could give them more specifics or the council as a whole, that would be better.
Sure.
Continue.
No, that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Nutty?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I too want to thank city staff, the police department, and all nonprofits that were involved in the Waterland Festival. And also, I was up at Midway Park again for National Night Out, one of my near and dear to my heart, grilling. We went through a ridiculous amount of burgers, dogs, and beyond beef or beyond burgers. But it was, it was a great event. And I tell you, when, when somebody asks if you're getting paid to be out there, and you say, no, you're doing it out of the kindness of your heart, and then some child grabs your hand and walks across the park with you just to hang out, man, Midway Park is, is a, is a good spot. So I'm glad we've acquired more space up there. And I know the community enjoys us up there. So thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Deputy Mayor Buxton?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I wanted to, along with the National Night Out theme here, it was a great evening, and I did want to offer a little bit of clarity in regard to the, how public it is. I, I think National Night Out is about the block watch program, which means that it's about a block, or it's about a small neighborhood gathering together to protect their, their micro environment. And I, I think that there is some concern at different times about the block watch captains and the advertisement of their home address. and the advertisement of their home address and what people might be doing to protect their neighborhood. So I think that there's a privacy element there that many of the participants appreciate. So I think Block Watch itself and National Night Out is a nationally public, get involved, contact Tanya Seaberry. But as far as individual addresses, I think that's the reason for the privacy. In regard to some of the other things, I attended a senior services advisory committee meeting. And senior services, they're, they're just working all the time to do fun stuff in the community. There's going to be a bongo event on Saturday, August 12th from 10 to 2. It's $25. You can type in the Activity Center or type in the information if you want to find out about that. The senior services is also having a bizarre, a holiday bizarre on November 18th. And if you're interested in selling, it's $50 a table. Hope everybody has a chance to attend and buy stuff. If you would like to get involved in senior services advisory, call NOV at the Activity Center. Also attended a farmer's market meeting. The market is doing great, but they need volunteers, seems like everybody needs volunteers. So if you want to be involved in putting on that amazing event that we have every Saturday, get ahold of Suzie Novak, Farmer's Market. Human Services Advisory Commission, we got a tour of one of the facilities and agencies that we support. Our city supports called the Genesis Project. It's a transition agency that helps women and girls get off the streets and into a healthy lifestyle. And they, they network these women, young women with all sorts of services and help and support. And we were able to actually work a little bit more of a connection for Genesis Project while we were there to connect them with a new, which is a workforce training place down in the valley that the city actually supports as well. So they help, they help people get trained and into careers. And then also with the college. So we're trying to connect, connect Genesis Project with more educational resources for the women that come through their agency. Fabulous organization. I attended the Highline Forum and I was so happy to hear, it was a workforce training kind of theme for the, and the Highline Forum is several cities around here in the southwest area. Get together and share information, education. Workforce training just keeps on being the big thing, just what we talked about with, that Councilmember Nutty brought up. And also one of the decisions we made tonight in regard to supporting a grant coming in to build facilities. So really excited to see a lot of energy going that way in our region. I want to talk a moment about trafficking, kind of segueing from the, the Genesis Project conversation. I went and attended the, the movie The Sound of Freedom with Rep. Orwell a couple of weeks ago. And there is state funding available to help, especially with child trafficking. And it's still sitting there. It hasn't really, the baton hasn't really been picked up. So there's more work to be done. She's doing a lot of work. And I just want to say, as far as my place in the city, if there's an opportunity to advocate, to support victims of trafficking, I'm going to do everything I can in this position to bring about safety and help for people in that arena. So, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Buxton. I also saw that movie and it was very impactful. It changed my thoughts about it and I want to fully support that as well. Trafficking is, is bad news and it's, it's modern day slavery. Also like to thank the city for all of your hard work, along with, you know, for the, the parade and the Waterland weekend and so much more there. There's a lot more to it than most people realize. Couple of others I want to add is Judson Park and the theater. Ben Anderson was a champion at the theater, allowing the announcers to be up there and the judges and so forth. And so that can be a cornerstone. I attended National Night Out, I went with the acting police chief, Kui. And we went to eight or nine different places. We wish we could have stayed longer, but we made an appearance wherever we could. And we, we heard some concerns and so forth, but it was just great. And I would add that you were spot on, Deputy Mayor Buxton, that the sensitivities of people releasing their addresses is always of an issue. The additional thing that most people don't realize also is it also kind of positions where, it almost gives away our law enforcement's hand of where they'll be located because a lot of times they're going to be making stops at particular locations and so forth. And it could reduce the safety of our citizens. So putting word out irresponsibly can be problematic. Wonderful music in the park, we still got some Wednesdays to go. And August 16th, we're going to have a citizens advisory committee. And I wanted to add one thing about, to the folks in Redondo in particular. Yes, you can help us with the, with our, with our state legislators, but I want you to, I want you to know we're cared. And you should be paying attention to who supported you on the dais from the votes. Who voted, who voted to make the board walk a park? And these types of things that even though they're taking time are going to make those pertinent changes. Who voted for the bonds that you're going to get the improvements that are going to add to extra security and, and make the place a nice place to live? So that's one of the things here that you're getting the support. And just note who's doing that. With that, we will have our next meeting on August 17th for a study session. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I have Councilmember Pennington and I, Councilmember Nutty assume on a second. With, with that said, all those in favor? Everybody have a safe weekend. Meeting adjourned.